It's like being in class again, everybody's supposed to know.
Good morning and welcome to the Medina County Commissioners' meeting. Now please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligations. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Steve, could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Sure, move to approve the minutes of June 15th.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. We'll move on into our resolutions. First up, we have Andy Conrad, and standing in for Andy is Dan Becker. Good morning, Dan.
Morning. I've got two resolutions for your consideration today. The first resolution is approving the final plat for the Windfall State Subdivision Phase One. And the second resolution is approving the annual assessments on improvements construction on the same Windfall State Subdivision Phase One. And then we've got our weekly permits.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Dan. Next up, Amy Lyon Galvin, our Assistant County Administrator. Good morning, Amy.
I have nine resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is amending the 2021 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The third is the creation of a Community Corrections Act Intensive Supervision Probation Grant Fund for the Medina County Adult Probation Department for fiscal year 2223 and authorizing appropriations. The fourth is the creation of the Felony Delinquent Care Fiscal Year 22 Fund and authorizing appropriations. The fifth is creation of the Domestic Relations Security Grant Fund and authorizing appropriations. The sixth is creation of the Domestic Relations Technology Grant Fund and authorizing appropriations. The seventh is allowing expenses of the county engineer. This is for Andy Conrad to attend a land records modernization conference in Columbus. The eighth resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. This is for two members of the Auditor's Department to attend the association meeting in Cincinnati this summer. And the ninth resolution is approving claims for the week in the amount of $6,193,928.94.
Move to approve the nine resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion, questions? Roll call please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. And next, we have Holly Muir, our Human Resources Director. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have four new hires, two in sanitary, one in HR, and one in maintenance, one promotion in building, eight rate increases, five at Job and Family Services, and three in sanitary, one transfer between agencies from maintenance, two leave of absence in sanitary, and two resignations in Job and Family Services. Second resolution is amending the table of organization for the Medina County Commissioners Department.
Move to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Next up, we have Scott Miller, our County Administrator. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning. I have two resolutions for you today. The first resolution is approving a fiber optic cable access node location agreement. This is with Medina County Port Authority. This is installing a rack of equipment down in the server room that we have here in the Administration Building for the fiber network. And the second resolution is authorizing change orders for the Medina County Human Services Building Parking Lot Project. The total comes to, well, there are three change orders totaling $122,000. What we found, unknown to us, the cement parking lot was poured on clay. There was no base under that parking lot. So in order to do the project right, we have to excavate, I think about 13 inches, and actually lay a base down. So the majority of that change order, the majority of the change orders is for that purpose.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions? So are you going to put additional drainage in to have appropriate drainage?
I don't know, I know that there are...
I'm seeing a no back there from Stephen.
Yeah.
No drain, it's going to just be the base. They're going to put a geogrid in, and then they're going to put in heavier stone, and then lighter stone, and then most updated on top of that.
Okay, but there's sufficient drainage, so we don't have any heaving? Okay.
Any idea when that parking lot was built?
Been poured on the same time the building was built, which was 1982, 81-ish.
Okay. Hard to believe they built it on the top of clay.
Change orders still fall within parameters of the bid.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Roll call please.
Well, let me clarify. The contract is increasing from $465,000 to $587,000.
Within parameters of bid rules.
Yeah.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
You know, we're all looking at you, what you were supposed to do, right? Thank you, Scott. Next up, we have Jeremy Cinco, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the sanitary engineer to bid chemicals for their water and wastewater treatment facilities. And the second is authorizing change order number one for the Sanitary Sewer Rehab Project 2020. And that's just an extension of the contract due to supply issues.
All right, move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions? Roll call please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Jeremy. We'll move into our department updates, and first up, we have Shannon Ryan, our Transit Director.
Good morning.
Good morning, Shannon.
We have one resolution for your consideration. It's the approving the purchase of onboard mobile data communication devices and fixed route software to be installed on our vehicles. This came through a 5310 grant through NOAACA that the Commissioners assisted with earlier this year. This was approved. This will allow us to do many things, obviously communicate with our vehicles in real time with drivers. It'll allow us to also schedule more efficiently and move into some fixed route routing software that'll allow us to put some bus stops in and really solidify our service on a fixed route basis. We're really excited about this project, so we want to get started as soon as possible.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions?
I'll just say, I haven't been around a long time. This is like a dream come true, just kind of routing software, being able to do that in real time. It's unbelievable. So glad the technology has actually been there and the affordability of it. So this is awesome.
So does this include GPS technology so that we know where the buses are at all times? Perfect.
The vehicle will have a GPS signal, the bus stop will be geo-coded. Therefore, we'll be able to use our Easy Fair app. Folks will be able to plan their trip, know when the bus is coming, and to be able to plan and pay for their trip on their phone is exciting, yes.
Yes, that's great. Roll call please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Also have a...
Shannon, you can do your report now.
Yeah, I have a couple of reports. Some good news is the Easy Fair validators that we've been waiting on are getting installed today. I met with the install team, they're on-site right now installing those. So those are exciting times for us to not only, again, fully leverage the Easy Fair app, it will also allow our public to be more aware of how to do it because the validator is right going to be on the bus. Very excited about that. Also say that our ridership in Medina and Wadsworth is way above average right now. So we're seeing a return in Wadsworth, which is nice. Talking to the drivers, the public's out riding in Wadsworth. So I think that's a good sign for us. Also mention that we have scheduled a Medina County Public Stakeholders Meeting on July 1st. It's going to be something that brings a large group together. We sent out, I think I sent out 66 invites, received over 32 confirmations, and a lot of folks are excited about what we're going to do. And moving into the RFP for our strategic plan, long-term, is, again, another step in the right direction for Medina County Public Transit.
Where's that going to be held at, Shannon?
Coral Room here in the Admin Building.
Okay, and what time and date?
It's noon on July 1st, Thursday, July 1st.
I haven't signed up for it.
Thank you for your support in that. I think that's going to be a very telltale meeting to what we see the public looking for. Everybody from United Way Summit and Medina, Paul, things, you know, the park system's excited about it. We met with them recently, so we got a lot of good stakeholders involved, along with our Officer for the Adults, Veteran Services, Job and Family Services will be there. Our group will grow in support, too. So that's good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk about your numbers at all?
I did mention the Wadsworth numbers and the Medina numbers going up. We're seeing, opposed to last year in May, where we really didn't run. It really is good to see a one-year turnaround in our ridership. Folks didn't forget about us, and they're still riding. So I think they're excited, along with the lifting of some of the measures that's been in place. We still have masks on the bus for the driver through the FTA. It's required by the FTA through September 13th of this year. So folks are reminded to wear that mask, drivers are wearing a mask. We have some masks available on the bus if folks forget, but that's something we're holding that to. So we're also sanitizing the buses, sanitizing the buses and keeping them clean as always. I think I got some compliments of buses that never looked better, I think because they're a little newer, too. So we're good.
So how many buses do we have in total now?
Well, we have 23 revenue vehicles, one of those is a van. We run about 18 a day. Maintenance has done a great job. Stephen and I talk continuously about how we're driving down costs, but also just realizing that we're actually preventative maintenance efforts are really helping us to prevent things that could happen on the road. So our service interrupting road calls is what the FTA calls it, those have gone down, too. So we're catching things before it becomes a problem on the road, which we don't want.
Excellent.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good things happening in transit.
A lot of good things, thanks, Bill. Thank you.
Next, we have Debbie Kylie from Job and Family Services.
Good morning. As is my custom, I will go by division. Child Protective, to date, the agency has received about 944 abuse neglect calls, and that's compared to 863 the year prior. We have 81 children in care, and this is as of May, I couldn't get statistics for the current month. 24 of those children are placed with relatives, 14 are in residential settings, and the balance, which is about 43, are in either non-relative homes or on trial visits with a relative, could be a parent, grandparent. We currently have 45 foster homes, that's up from 42 in December of 2020, so our recruitment efforts are working. Of those 45 homes, we have 29 of those homes that currently have placements. So some of those homes have more than one child. In the Child Support Division, year-to-date support collections are over 12.4 million, that's as of May of this year, and approximately 1.5 million of that is for payment on past due obligations. And August is Child Support Awareness Month, I realize it's only June, but the Division is gearing up to promote and encourage responsible parenting and family self-sufficiency. And next month, I'll ask for your support in proclaiming August as Child Support Awareness Month. The Public Assistance Division, applications for all our programs, so that would be cash, food, and Medicaid combined, is just over 1,400 applications to date. The Medicaid-only requests, meaning they don't want any of our cash or financial assistance programs, just coverage for insurance, is just over 1,000. And emergency assistance requests to date have been about 219 applications, and that's a little lower than I think what we would have anticipated, but with the ending of additional unemployment benefits, the eviction moratorium on the horizon, we're anticipating that those emergency assistance requests will increase. So I reached out to our different emergency assistance providers, think Community Action, the Housing Authority, and asked to convene a meeting with them to talk about all the different funding that they might have for emergency assistance, whether it's utilities or rental assistance, and how we can align those programs with one another so we're not unnecessarily duplicating services and providing the greatest benefit to our community. So we met yesterday, it was actually a very informative meeting. And the agency as a whole, the building reopened to the public on June 1st. Things are working quite well, visits to the office are manageable. The community seems to remain embraced in the different ways that they can reach JFS. They are using email, they're using other forms of technology to reach out to us, whether that's applications for assistance or payments for child support. We're continuing to pursue, I mentioned this last month, a new software program that's going to allow phone calls, rather than have a desktop phone in the office that workers, even if they're working remotely, are having to tap into, that the software program will actually, on their laptops, be a phone. So we're providing them headsets so they can do their work remotely and more privately when calls are coming just through their laptop. And redesigning of our website, it desperately needed a makeover, so that work started last month, and it will continue until completion. Those are my updates. Questions?
How many kids did you say we had in foster care?
In foster...
Forty-nine?
There's 81 in care, and there's 43 that are sitting in and residing with non-relatives, and 24 of those 81 are with relatives.
But 81's the overall number?
Mm-hmm, correct.
I thought it was 49, and it seemed like a large drop, and I was just curious.
Yes, yes.
But it's not.
No, unfortunately, it's not.
Okay, all right. Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
Next, we have Linda Hoffman, our County Recorder. Good morning.
Good morning. Hot off the press, I have a report for you, a quick year-to-date update on the department. And first of all, I want to say what a pleasure it is to now be done with the renovations of the office. I think maintenance completed their last few tasks within the last couple of weeks, and we're glad to be operational and back open to the public for their in-person visits. You would think there would be a change expected from where we were last year at this time with COVID to where things are now. And just a quick update for you, technology is our friend. Our e-filings have increased 75% from the first five months of last year. I won't cite the numbers there, but you can see it's significant. And I expect that trend's going to continue into the future. And that is a boost for allowing both residents and title companies, mortgage lenders, to do their work remotely and not have to make a stop into our building, as nice as it is. The total documents processed is also up 28% over the same time last year. And the e-filings that I discussed earlier, as a percentage of the whole, is up almost 20% for the first five months of this year. All that means, the important number for you, the increase in revenue, 61% in the first five months of this year. It was actually alarming enough that we had a call last week from the State Auditor's Office asking us why our number was so high. We said, "Well, it's a function of how many documents are filed." So they wanted to make sure we didn't misplace a decimal somewhere in our accounting. Also, two other programs that our department offers are the property fraud enrollments. We've had 162 homeowners take advantage of that just in this year. That's a 20% increase of the total number of county residents that are protecting their property that way. And in case you wonder how effective that really is, that program has actually issued 150 alerts just this year to property owners that... And again, that may just be to notify them that action was taken regarding their property, not necessarily that there was a fraud, but at least they're alerted to that, and they have an opportunity to confirm that or have it investigated further. And then we continue now to offer the renewals and new veterans ID cards, and we've had a year-to-date 58 new issues and 39 renewals for just under 100 veterans taking advantage of that program as well. So that's where we are for the first five months of this year. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
So Linda, for anybody that's watching, how does one enroll in the property fraud program?
On the property fraud alert program, they can call our office, and one of our clerks will direct them to the website. If they're not very tech savvy, we can assist them over the phone to register their property. And then what happens is, when there is a transaction, they get to notify the program whether they would like to receive that alert by phone or by email. And then when they receive that alert, they follow up directly with our third-party provider on that.
But if they want to enroll, they can go to your website?
They can go to our website for the information, and we have the link to the property fraud program for that.
Okay. And there are, what, something in the neighborhood of 77,000 parcels in Medina County? Does that sound right?
I'll trust your number on that.
About 83,000.
There we go. Eighty-three.
Eighty-three thousand, so we're about 1/80 of the way there, right?
Well, and it is a relatively new program that doesn't have a lot of publicity, and people don't really understand what it's about. Since having the opportunity to notify homeowners and taking office, I am now sending out a letter to property owners that are new, not if there's just a transfer of ownership between husband and wife or to a corporation, but really gearing this to the individual homeowner, where the fraud's likely to occur, and letting them know that the program exists. So I'm hoping that we'll see an increase in those numbers, especially with the amount of real estate activity that the county's currently seeing.
You could probably do a flyer, put it in the water and sewer bills, too.
As well as in our Commissioner newsletter, I'm not sure of the last time it's been promoted.
Yeah, not sure. Thanks for the inquiry, appreciate it. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Good. Appreciate it. We have one liquor permit change that I will read into the record here. This is a transfer of a liquor permit from Fine Wines of France LLC. DBA Fine Wines of France, located at 1624 Fixler Road, Wadsworth Township, Wadsworth, Ohio. And this is for a C2 permit, which is wine and mixed beverages in sealed containers for carryout. So we'll move into public comment. Do we have anybody? Ms. Jones?
Does anybody else want to go ahead? Okay, I do have packets that I'll give you after I tell you what I'm going to speak about here. I don't know if you're aware that last Friday and yesterday, nine county prosecuting offices were given a press release and a letter, and also Attorney General Yost was delivered a letter, and it concerns Ohio residents, call on State Attorney General, nine county prosecuting attorneys to launch criminal investigations into radioactive pollution of waterways. So there is a law, under a law in 2002, which is ORC 2927.24, introducing radioactive elements into Ohio drinking water is a felony offense, and companies are violating that. And for counties, county prosecutors or the Attorney General knowingly to know about it, they're liable for investigation, too. So what it is, is we residents of the county that delivered these letters are demanding the enforcement of Ohio Revised Code and to launch a felony investigation into the disposal of radioactive waste into Ohio drinking watersheds. The residents charged that the crime of poisoning is normally caused by the spreading of radioactive oil and gas drilling, which is the brine, which has been proven to be above ODNR limits, safe limits, and it's spread on public highways, is a deicer, is a dust suppressant, and in public restrooms. So poisoning is a first-degree felony in violation of ORC 2927.24. So with that, I know you always remind me I only have five minutes to talk, and there's so much to go through here, so I'll give you the packets. But the ask today of the Commissioners, what I'm asking you and other residents are asking you, would you please push our Medina County Prosecutor to request that a criminal investigation be opened because the spreading of brine is illegal according to state law OR2C, I'm sorry, ORC 2927.24? That is the ask today. So I'm going to give you packets, the press release that went out to all the news media, and I believe Mr. Finan was going to be here, and he got a copy. Hi. And there's the cover letter that went to Yost and to all the prosecuting attorneys, and it's gone to the law directors also. If you have any questions, you can let me know after the meeting, but there's just too much in the packet. And this is all the evidence with showing how radioactive it is and who's tested it and so forth. And just one other thing, today at 4:00, Senate Bill 171 is going to be heard for the third time, okay? And in that, anyway, we all had testimony, opponent testimony there. So part of that bill, you know, they made the radioactive oil and gas waste a commodity last year, but under this new bill, there will be no regulation for it. It will not be tested by ODNR. There will be no labeling on it when it's sold, and it can be sold under different labels. Right now, it's Aqua Salina. It will not show that it has radium in it, it will not be tested, and it will be allowed to be sold by, and it's poisoning, okay? It causes leukemias, it causes all kinds of cancers. And I myself don't have grandchildren, and my son passed away, so I'm not asking for my nieces and nephews and so forth, but all of us need to be concerned about this because it's going to affect, not just now, but future generations. And the RA 226, and I think it's 223, goes directly to the bones, and it doesn't dissipate for 500 years, this radium, so it's not going to go away, and it goes directly to the bones, causing leukemias and so forth. So, and I know, Mr. Hambley, last year, you were opposed to, you did speak out to not have this spread on our roadways. And last year, I spoke to Medina City Council, and they had Aqua Salina, and they were starting to use it. They took it off the shelves, they don't want to use it in the city, and we need to let the county not use it and put pressure on Yost and the state. So here's your packets.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening. If anybody has questions, they can let me know. Thank you. And I just want to tell you, this isn't easy for me to get up here and do this.
Would you state your name and address for the record?
Kathy Jones, Shearont Township.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else like your dress? Hearing none, we'll move on into our discussion session. Scott, I think you have a few items.
Yeah, I've got several items to discuss today. First, the ramp at the courthouse is open today, so people are able to access the front door through the ramp, which is a good thing. Last week, I sent you a, oh, I had given you the scorecard for the ARP funding, and I got some suggestions back. So I sent you a revised scorecard. It obviously has the project name, the department or agency who's making the request, a check yes or no whether or not it complies with the ARP guidelines, the dollar amount requested. And then I've got nine rating criteria, permanency of improvement, county department versus other department or agency, availability of other funding sources, multi-agency benefit, continuing operational cost, impact to the community served, does the purchase advance provide a public benefit, can success be measured, and the number of residents benefiting. The rating is 1 to 25, it has a place for total score, the dollar amount authorized for a request or project, and the name of the score. If there's anything else that you would like me to add, I guess I would like to get this finalized today, I know we have until July 9th, but it's going to take us some time to insert the projects into the scorecard, because we've got, what, $65 million in requests, and we're getting $35 million, 17 and 1/2 this year, and then 17 and 1/2 next year. So if there's changes you would like made, if we could discuss today, and I can make those changes and finalize it, and then we can start getting the information entered into the, under the card and give it to you.
I just had one question. Regardless of what the score is that the individual puts down, they can also put a potentially different dollar amount than requested?
Yeah, so let's say that, yeah...
You know what I mean? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So we all may have different, regardless of the score, but yeah.
Yeah. So let's say that you approve a water tower that EPE wants us to build. You know, maybe it's a $5 million project, but you say, you know what, they've got a little bit of money, so let's give $4 million, and then sanitary can make up the additional billion.
Or maybe have somebody that's $6 million, and we only want to give three.
So beyond the score, we also have the freedom to adjust the dollar amount?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend that for most of the projects, but there may be some projects that you want to do that with.
Any other?
Well, I know, you know, my comments have been, too, about, I shared with you, the idea of immediacy, and some of these things we could actually hold until next year, some of those applications. And in a sense, that's not part of the scoring criteria, it is one like, it has some merit, but it's not one we ought to be pursuing, because there's a lack of immediacy. And I want to make sure that, you know, because there are plans that are being worked on, and maybe to become clearer as to what the expense ought to be, the other sources of funding, likewise, any conditions that may change.
Could that be something, once we score, though, that we discuss and say, hey, we want to hold this for the next year's file?
I guess, too, to that point, what my thought was, is could we add comments at the bottom?
Yeah, yeah.
So that we, I mean, if you feel, let's push this back till next year, or the following funding period, we could do that, but I think, I think we could put comments in and share the comments back and forth.
And maybe I should, I'll pick a candidate, this, like the jail expansion. Okay, has some need and so forth, but it's not one we need, immediately need to make some decisions on.
Right.
We know there's pending legislation, they're looking at trying to provide some, under the Ohio Facilities Commission, ability for funding, and putting in, if you will, an additional funding for those kind of projects, like, okay, let's wait and see how that works out before we would end up committing. And I think those are other factors, although it, you know, has some merit, obviously has some need, but likewise, it's not a decision we have to make, make now. So that's why I think having those comments in there would be very important.
Yeah. I think, and then we can clarify any of our scoring on any of the one through nine, just through the comments.
Yeah, okay. I agree.
All right, so I'll go ahead and include comments, and then get this back to you from one last look, and then we'll start.
How about if you just, since we're approving it, right?
We're approving, okay.
So just add the comment section, and then let's publish it, and with the, yeah, the project, projects, and so forth.
All right. The other thing, I know that we had, last week, we briefly discussed the 340B program. I was waiting on information from Lodi Community Hospital, which I received over the, or last week after the meeting. There's an MOU and a certification contract. Basically, the 340B program is a drug pricing program that provides the hospital access up to 50% lower than typical market prices. In order to participate, entities such as the Lodi Hospital must meet eligibility criteria and agree to comply with program requirements. This program is administered by the Health Resources and Services Administration. It requires a covered entity to complete and submit a hospital certification contract with the state, local government, to provide health care services to low-income individuals. The memorandum of understanding is being presented to the Board of Commissioners, and is with Lodi Community Hospital, to establish and support the certificate of contract. So basically, it says it's a low drug or a low pharmaceutical program, serving low-to-moder income individuals, when they need this MOU and the certificate in order to provide this. So I'm just requesting that I be allowed next week to present these on resolution for approval. It's got to be done by July 15th.
Yes.
Yeah, definitely.
I mean, the agreement was very short, I mean, it was only two pages, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I think to make it clear to the public, those savings have to be transferred to the, a person getting the prescription filled. In other words, the savings are not to Cleveland Clinic, the savings are to the consumer, which is very important, given the complexity of our pharmaceutical industry and so forth, sometimes those savings are not passed on. And so this is one, I think, that it's a very good program, and I think that definitely we want to participate, help those low and moderate income individuals be able to have access to those pharmaceuticals at a lower price.
Okay. So I'll have a resolution prepared for next week. The other thing, or another item for discussion, is I know that we had talked about the conferencing equipment and the different locations, and I had submitted a list of recommendations, and I got responses back from the three of you on your recommendations. So currently, there are 10 locations. There's balcony room B here in the administration building, the engineering front conference room, economic development conference room, the sheriff's office front training room, the human services center, and it's actually in their dining room, it's where they actually do remote yoga and jazzercise for senior citizens. A JFS director's conference room, board of elections conference room, a JFS training room, there's a engineering center block conference room, and EMA operations room. If it's okay with you, I'd like to go ahead and get quotes to put the equipment in those rooms, you all agreed to those. The remaining locations, we can actually include those on the scorecards, and you can score those, and we can do those at a later date, there's no reason to do those immediately.
So on your matrix, Scott, you included the facilities that, that basically had a check from all three of us, right?
Yes.
Did you include any ones that had a check from two or three?
No.
Okay.
No. And there are a couple on there. And the central processing facility, that's one where we have the, you know, solid waste committee, policy meetings. That wasn't, you know, there's two of the three, but that's something, again, it's not immediate, we can do that at some later date if we so desire.
I probably may be credit blocking, some of those at least hesitant to make the investment now. We know that the solid waste policy committee meets with some infrequency. We are, the state legislature is also, at this point, as of July 1, no longer going to be able to do remote meetings. So given those conditions, that's one of those things, like, hold off making those investments. And I want to make sure that the ones we do invest in, that they are being used.
I just thought, as far as getting a quote, you do them now, you might get a better quote for all of them.
Or we actually may get a better quote later. We know the cost of technology, well, I guess it depends on the chip shortage.
Right.
I actually spoke to a vendor yesterday, and they indicated that prices are increasing. I mean, when you throw this much money into the, into the economy, and people are limited as to what they can spend the money on, and this is one of them, everybody's going after this type of equipment, so prices are rising. So there might be some wisdom in, you know, maybe doing some now and some later. I don't know, a year from now, or two years from now, where the prices will be, but there may be some wisdom in that.
The only thing I would suggest, especially at the central processing facility, is that we at least put the infrastructure in, so the backing and wiring and things that we may need, so it's there in the event that we do add it.
Okay.
Since that one's under construction.
Yes.
Yeah.
Almost done?
About a month and a half.
It's the way of the future.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
The other, the other item is, I've got a resolution here. As you know, late Thursday, Juneteenth was signed in, well, the governor authorized Juneteenth as a, as a holiday for state employees. And obviously, it was, we didn't get notification really until about 10 o'clock Thursday night, so we didn't have time to actually act on it. So this, I have a resolution here that would, in recognizing Juneteenth, and allowing county employees to take a floating holiday between now and year end. There is, the prosecutor has an opinion out there that basically says that we have to provide this day to employees. I did speak to Dennis DiCamello in the auditor's office, and we feel this is probably the easiest way to do it. That way, it's consistent throughout the county, versus elected officials giving a day here, you know, one elected official gives this day, another elected official gives this day, another one gives a floating holiday. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to go ahead and adopt the resolution, and that can notify the auditor and let them know how to handle payroll. And we can also let the employees and different elected officials know that this has been done, and give them, let them notify their employees.
And that's just for this year, but next year, we'll have to come up with another resolution, correct?
Yeah, well, next year, it'll be included in the resolution that we do in December that recognizes the annual holidays.
It's that day.
Right, exactly. That's what I'm saying, basically, we have to take this action just for this year. We have to take another action next year regarding this, depending on how that, obviously, the state decides to incorporate it. Okay.
The governor already can.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, by executive order, but also, I think his, his proposal was that the legislature put it in the ORC.
Yeah, they did last Friday.
And, yeah, right, but the general assembly has not acted on it, so I guess we'll wait and see.
So can we have a motion?
Oh, sure, yeah, move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Swatik? Hudson?
Yes.
Okay. Another item of discussion is, we received an email from the Ohio, the Historical Society here in Medina, and they are wanting to know if they would have the ability to search for relics, once they do the excavation of the parking lot at the courthouse, between the time that they excavate and the time that they actually start the foundation and the work, be a short period of time, that they might be able to come over and with metal detectors and see if they can find anything from the Medina's past.
Are there any safety concerns?
I would, I would say, yes, there probably are some safety concerns and some liability issues. I think it's a great idea, but there is a liability the county would take on by allowing it. If we do allow it, I would suggest that we have a set time in the evening, that they can, a set time in day, that they could come over and they could walk through the parking lot.
Will Corsa require us to maybe have a waiver for the ones who are actually physically doing it?
I can check with Corsa and see if there's anything additional we would have to do. I think our liability may, may cover it.
It'd be a good idea. Stephen, do you have some comments you'd like to make? I see you back there. Why don't you come right up here? Make your comments.
Good morning.
Good morning, Stephen.
I do have concerns. I think we need to get with Gilbane, making sure from a safety standpoint. Once we excavate, I'm not sure what that ground's going to look like. I know we've talked about it through Gilbane, just saying what we're going to find in that parking lot when we start excavating, but having people just wander through it, I don't know if that's a great idea. We need to probably get with Gilbane to see if there's a day and time where it'll be flat enough, or excavated enough where people can just go through it. I mean, it's going to scrape off pretty quick, and we're taking down five feet, I do believe, so it's, we're going to get through it pretty quick. So if they're wanting to go through layer by layer, you're going to drive a timeline on that, so.
So Stephen, is the expectation when they excavate this off, that they're going to have tractor trailers there that are going to take the soil offsite?
I will confirm that, but yeah, I just, I do believe the, the plan right now is, we'll probably end up taking off the asphalt and then just starting to dig down. It'll just go from an excavator straight into the truck and out the gate, and that's it. So we're, there's going to be a wheel wash station in, so.
So there probably won't be a lot of opportunity, then, for investigation?
I wouldn't think so. I mean, again, we'd have to get with Gilbane to see how, well, we'd get with Gilbane and the construction company to see how they're planning on taking that off and removing that soil, but I would assume that it's going to come off pretty quickly.
Obviously, the safety concerns, first and foremost. Secondly, if they're using basically detectors, and they get a reading of a massive metallic something underneath there, what are we going to do? We going to allow them to spend several days to dig it up and find out it's an old piece of pipe? Is really not quoting relic? So I get, the question is, what are they looking for, what do they expect to find? Is there any indication that there is something of significant, if you will, value or historical importance under this, under these surfaces?
I think the answer to that question, Steve, is they don't know. They suspect, just based on what was there, that they make reference to, to a gallows, apparently, back in the day, there may have been a gallows somewhere near the building, and, and some kind of a stable somewhere near the building.
Well, the gallows looked like wooden.
Yeah, but they may have had some metal components. I, I don't know. I guess my, my suggestion would be, is that, A, that we alert the contractors to the possibility that there may be something, and that they can just be on the lookout for it, and then, and then also talk to the contractors about whether there is a safe way of doing this. I mean, I don't know where they're going to take the spoils to, when they remove them offsite, and they're going to dump them someplace, and, and if it could be coordinated, that if they wanted to go out and metal detect the spoils after they dump them, I think that might be a reasonable solution. But I'm a little hesitant to have somebody there at eight o'clock at night, throwing around with their metal detector, or poking around with a shovel, and have something gaited in and top of them, and nobody's going to be there to see them.
Yeah.
If it can be done safely, I would not necessarily have a concern, but if, yes, you want to come up?
Just a point of interest.
Well, if you're going to speak, please come up, because we want you on the video here.
John Burke County Treasurer. I just wanted to let you know that, just a point of interest, I grew up on Southeast Street, right over here, two blocks, and my grandfather built the house in 1912, and when he excavated for the basement, I've got bags full of arrowheads and axe heads, and an archaeologist took a look at it, they're 2,000 years old. So you never know what you'll find, and that's just a block off the square. So, just a point of interest.
Yeah, what I can do is, I can go ahead and talk to Gilbane and see if there's even an opportunity. I mean, like Stephen said, we don't know, once, once they take the, grind the parking lot down, and then take the parking lot off, I don't know if that's going to take a day or less than a day, and then they're going to start excavating. So we can check with Gilbane and kind of see what that process is, and see if there's even an opportunity. And Commissioner Hambley?
Yeah, just, what's, I guess, is there an idea what the historic profiles or grades look like there? I mean, down the way, yeah, you could probably go down and say, yes, that's why there's arrowheads, but if it's already been excavated, it's basically has been filled over the years, I mean, I remember, obviously, when the old jail was there, I remember some of the other buildings, you had that old, what was it, gas station, and then turned into a car, a car dealership, and of course, it's a downward grade, so if it's all pretty much just old fill, then the chances are that you're not going to find much of it. There's not going to be 2,000-year-old Indian artifacts, because it's all been filled up. So I guess that's the question I would have, is what's the grade, and is that, is that an elevation that you might expect to find something of historic value?
Yeah, and I don't know, I did, I mean, there's a lot of questions.
Right, there is, okay.
I mean, again, there are safety concerns, safety issues, and, but just wanted to, since we got the request from the Historical Society, I wanted to bring it to your attention and get your thoughts, and we can follow up and let you get more information for you. I think they're going to start excavating, though. When does that start, Stephen? Do you remember? A couple of weeks? So it's going to be one of those things where we're going to have to make a decision fairly quickly, so.
And I would presume that the excavation's going to go fairly quickly?
I would assume so, yeah.
I'm thinking just a few days.
Yeah.
And I'll dug out.
Yeah. The last item that we need to discuss is, as you know, the county home levy ends, actually, in 2022. The earliest we can put a levy on is this November. So I've got Greg here to present some of the financial information to you, so we can discuss whether or not we want to put a levy on this year, or if we want to wait until next year, next May, or next November, and whether or not there's, there's a need for the levy. So, Greg?
All right, good morning. So today, right, I'm here to give you just a quick update on the home, but then to talk about the two tax levy options that were presented at a special meeting to the County Home Advisory Council on the 28th of April. Next slide? Oh, got ahead of myself. And next slide. So we're at 42 residents right now, as of last night. We're up to two potentially new candidates for the home. The adult daycare is up and running, we've got two consistence, and one visiting today for the first time. Looking at the hospice crossroads, that's with the prosecutor's office right now, to just check on that agreement there. And then biggest challenge is staffing, like with everyone else. And then biggest challenge is staffing, like with everyone else. Next slide. Just some stats, but all this to say that 70% of the home's operating budget does come from the levy. Next slide. So talking about the current levy, it will not provide enough revenue to sustain the home through the entire levy cycle of the 2023 through 2027. The next slides will have the two options that were presented to the advisory council. They'll both include the LPN raise that's already been approved, and then also the last slide, I'll just talk about the trends of the current paying of the home. Next slide. So option one that was presented to the advisory council was to replace, according to the Medina County Auditor's Office, there are 50-plus tax districts across the county, and the homestead exemption.
Can I ask a question about option one? I'm sorry. It says does not allow for any capital improvements, but I believe at that meeting, one of the capital improvements that was presented was the boiler, and we did authorize that through the ARP. So what additional capital improvements are listed that it does not allow for?
So, correct. The boiler is done. I have, I mean, I have my five-year plan of capital improvements, but.
What's the big one that was presented at that meeting? We did take care of.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So, all right. Taxpayers, districts across the county and homestead exemption is different in each district, typically saving the average taxpayer between $350 to $500 annually on their tax bill. There are about 14,000 parcels that benefit from the reduction. So option one will give us an additional increase of revenue over the standard levy that we have in place. It would require me to release one full-time employee and to get it from negative 81 to a surplus. I'd have to also release a part-time employee. This would also require me to replace my airmark food service contract with a full-time cook and two part-time cooks, which I would have to hire. This would place the food service licensing, food service inspections, hiring, training, food purchasing, food preparation, creating dietary menus, and maintaining the staff on the home. This option does not provide for the capital improvements, and it does not provide sufficient carryover balance for continued renewals. Next slide. Option two is the .2 renewal plus the .075 increase. This is only 77 cents more than option one. It provides more revenue, obviously, than option one. It will allow me to retain the food service contract and all that it provides. It retains the homestead exemption for the .2 renewal. It allows for capital improvements. It will allow for a carryover balance for continued renewals, and this option was the one that was selected by the advisory council for me to present to you as their, as their selection.
Greg, what's the annual budget for the county home?
Right now, hold on, I should have that.
Somewhere like 1.3?
I was going to say.
1.2?
Okay.
And how much does the current levy generate? About the same?
The current levy generates 990,000.
So about a million?
About a million.
Okay. And then the difference is made up from residents and other revenue sources?
And then, correct. Then comes the revenue of the farm lease and resident fees. Correct.
Okay. So in your projections, specifically thinking of the capital improvements, so there was about $350,000 for boilers and.
Windows.
HVAC and so forth, that we have proposed using ARP money for. So if that takes place, does that change the dynamics here of the numbers?
No. So specifically for the numbers for each of these, since I've gone to option two already, so when I show that at the end of 2027 that there's $412,000 remaining, that's not taking out any revenue at all. That's.
Well, but it says.
Or that's not taking out any capital improvements.
Well, but it, according to the bullet point right above that, it says it would allow for necessary capital improvement, so.
Correct, but.
My assumption would be is that $350,000, if we go with option two, and we fund the 350, that your, your fund balance at the end is going to be $762,000. Is that not correct?
That is not correct. So with the spreadsheet that I did, the capital improvements, none were put into the amount. If I had put those in, the 412 would actually reflect less. It would reflect the 300,000 off of it.
So you'd end up with 600, or excuse me, 62,000?
Correct. That is correct. So this is just with those capital improvements being done by the ARP money, that's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
Let me clarify, the 1.2 million is general fund portion. There is some money that's, some expenses you pay out of the actual levy fund, is about 300,000, so true budget of the county home is about 1.2. That's actually paid out of the levy fund.
By the levy, right. Okay. So Scott, with regard to the 350,000, so that's not included in these numbers?
That's my understanding.
I thought it was at the meeting.
It's been removed.
It's been removed.
It's been removed, okay.
Okay.
I actually would like to pose an option three. When, when the county home advisory board met in April, we didn't have all the solidified information on the ARP money. We did not know, you know, for sure the specifics of the $35 million that we were going to get. And I just think in this, we still are just beginning, the end of the pandemic, and we've had a lot of businesses and business owners that really took a hit in the last year and a half. And considering that we are receiving $35 million in the very near future, I think it's a difficult position to ask our residents for an increase of taxes. That being said, I completely support the county home, and I can support all the innovative things that Greg is bringing to the county home, and he's doing a great job. It would be absolutely fine with me to go for a straight renewal in, in November. I know it's not what Scott wants to hear, but I am completely in support of subsidizing the difference out of the general fund. We have a significant carryover. We, we actually did extremely well compared to some counties during the pandemic, and I'd like to support a straight renewal and subsidize for the next five years and see where we are then. We will hopefully clearly be past the pandemic then, and our residents, it would be a lot easier to ask our residents for an increase in taxes. So I actually, and again, this option was not presented in April to the county home advisory committee, because I completely respect the decision that they made, but again, we didn't have all the information about the 35 million that we were, we are about to receive. So again, I, I would like to see some sort of hybrid of what was presented to the county home and commit to subsidizing for the next five years out of the general fund money and go for a straight renewal. That's, that's what I would prefer.
How much of a subsidy would that be? Do we know?
So I would have to get back to you, because in both options, well, specifically in option one, which was, you're going actually in hybrids, you'd want to do a straight renewal.
A straight renewal, and again, our finances are strong right now, and we are about to get an incredible amount of money that we didn't know about last year. And again, still supporting all your efforts, still supporting the county home, subsidize for five years, and then reevaluate. When again, some of our, some of our residents were hurt significantly during this pandemic, and I, I am not willing at this point to ask for a tax increase, but I would be gladly willing to subsidize your department with our carryover.
It's about 300,000.
Yes, and our carryover is significant.
If I could jump in a little bit.
Sure, go ahead, Steve.
Having been here whenever we decided to close the county home in 2001, and then we put it on the ballot, there is a danger, and the whole idea of having it on its own was its ability to be independent. It has a superintendent that actually is appointed, has separate appointing authority, that is the historic nature of county homes. The idea was that, sure, in good times, we've got money, but the trouble was in bad times. When we were running out of money, when we were having difficulty, it's easy enough for the commissioners to rationalize and the public to rationalize. It's only 42 people. We have a population of 180,000, 190,000. So the question comes down to is, is it a priority? And will be a priority for the next board of commissioners or the board after that, at least for the next five years. And so I do not support a renewal and say we're going to provide a, the balance of it out of the general fund. If there was emergencies and so forth, of course, we would. But I don't think we ought to develop a budget or a plan contingent on, I will say, the goodwill, the good nature, and the understanding and enlightenment of the commissioners on this. I think that ultimately, yeah, arguably, their conditions are changing, and maybe this year is not the year to put the issue on the ballot and what that ought to be, but I think we are some fundamental principles. We, number one, shouldn't be reducing staff, and I don't want to have any planned budget where we end up reducing staff.
I don't either.
We know staff, well, the staff costs are going to continue to increase because of the nature of those, if you will, the trades, the medical staff and so forth. We know those costs are rising. We know we have to be competitive with our staff there, with all the other facilities that are of similar nature. That inflation in those areas has been tremendous, tremendously large over the last, over this last year, will likely continue. I can't see it diminishing. I don't have a problem with holding off making this decision for a while longer, so we can look at the economic impact, as you point out, of the businesses. There is a rebound or a resurgency occurring, so I'm fine with holding off, but I also, I'm not willing to die in, or nor will I support a straight renewal. I think that just, that says that, yeah, we're going to go ahead and just substitute the general fund money as a planned strategy. I think what we're really end up arguing is essentially, I think at the most, the most cost, the most expensive provision of option two was essentially $2.63 per year per 100,000 home. That's it. We're arguing about $2 or $2.63 for the most expensive option. And I'm not saying we ought to go with the replacement with the renewal of a new .075, but I think that what we ought to be looking at, the impact on per 100,000 on the taxpayer, and, and obviously, the need to make sure that it remains independently funded by, by our people, and that's what they're going to be voting on. Do they want to continue funding this, or do they not want to? And leaving that decision up to the people rather than to three commissioners. Like I said, I was here when we made that decision, and when the people resoundly says no, we want this institution to stay, and we're willing to pay for it. And that's what I think our decision is going to be based on, is what the level of services need to be, that important component in our community for housing individuals that have really very few other alternates, alternatives, and that likewise, making sure that there is sufficient funds that are generated through this tax levy to operate that. And so, yeah.
And, and I agree with every single one of the points you made. I just have an issue asking for any increase, no matter what it is, in a time when we've, we are about to receive a windfall of money, and, and we're still heading, just beginning to head out of the pandemic. So I do agree with every one of your points, with the exception of those two circumstances.
And, and I agree, Steve, that the county home should be independently funded and should be self-supporting. I think that's an important principle that we need to look at. You know, on the other hand, and this is one of the things I was going to bring up, our sales tax revenue for the month of April, for auto sales is up 50% over last year, and for non-auto sales is up 43% over last year, and it looks like that is a statewide phenomenon, not just Medina County. So I understand that last year we were just kind of in the throes of the pandemic, and we did have a couple of months where our revenues dipped below, but, but sales tax was pretty strong all the way through last year.
Look, the new, new home sales, what's going on? The price inflation is going on there. We know ultimately that does, it does impact some of our revenues in terms of property tax with the new construction component, as well as eventually when we do another reappraisal.
But we have to understand that dollars are going to come back and hit us in the backside.
Oh, I agree.
Because our costs are going to start going up.
Agreed.
And we need to be prepared for that as well.
I think in terms of a budget, we shouldn't plan that we have to subsidize that.
Correct. I would agree. When do we have to have a decision on this? Do we have to have it by August 4th to get it to the board of elections?
Yes, well, there's a process we have to go through. We have to get the revenue certified by the auditor. So there's actually two resolutions we have to pass, so it's at least a two-week process. So, and it has to be into the board of elections, August, first, first part of August, I think, 90 days before August 4th. So, yeah, so we'll need to have a decision fairly quickly. We have about five weeks to make the decision.
I would like to see the budget re-reviewed for the capital improvements based upon the ARP money and so forth. There's no doubt we ought to be looking at that impact. Secondly, I would like, I know that you've figured it as a .075 mil renewed, there's no reason we can't look at a .05, which reduces the ask, if you will, as to where that revenue falls. Why you did .75, I guess, is .075, excuse me.
We actually had done that in preparation for the county home advisory council, so we had presented to them a variety of options that got pared down ultimately to the two that they voted upon at their April meeting.
Right.
What the demonstration showed in terms of the .2 mil renewal is that we fell woefully short. It was, you know, in the negative, I want to say at the time, it was like a negative $400,000 ending balance, and that had not included the capital improvements. We've been, Greg's done a great job of delaying any reinvestment in the home because he's not had the resources in order to do so. So what you did end up seeing here for the replacement, the .2 mil replacement that did generate, it was maybe 130,000 additional dollars we were going to see with a replacement over a renewal. And it is, in that instance, he was not still able to do other capital improvements. And then when you looked at, we had looked at the .05 addition and a .1 addition. The .1 was too much, the .05 was too little, so that's how we'd settled in on that .075 for the county advisory council to consider. But the additional capital improvements, there's old carpet and so forth, and wood floors that need refinished. There's about $175,000 of improvements that we'd look to make if we had some available revenues. These improvements are for installations that were back in the early 80s, carpet and things.
Yeah, I know carpet wouldn't, but does anything on the list, like the boiler, qualify under the ARP money?
Only, only the boiler and the HVAC-related improvements qualify for that. Now, we did take into, into consideration the fact that those HVAC improvements would eliminate the need to replace the windows, so there's a capital cost avoidance, because part of the challenge with the current windows are the window units that we have to install for air conditioning. So that overall capital improvement through the ARP dollars does offset, it's a capital cost avoidance for that future. So those were all baked into this, but we can do certainly some more exhibit preparation so that you can see the detail that went into this that allowed the county advisory home council to vote in April.
Okay. Scott, have we updated our five-year projection for the county overall budget?
No. No, the last time that that was updated was beginning of the year. So I usually, once June is completed or halfway through the year, I usually will update that, that projection, once I have those final numbers.
Because that's the other thing that I would like to see, what that looks like, and maybe we can talk about that in terms of what we're looking at for expenses and increases in expenses going forward.
Okay.
Due to inflation and revenue.
Yeah. Yeah, if you don't mind, next week is July, so once I get those final numbers in June, I can update that five-year plan quickly and get you a copy of it, and, and we can talk about it then the following week, so that'd be, I think, two weeks.
I would ask that, a request, I know that's not required, but before we adopt a resolution, actually, if we're going to put it on the ballot in November, that we would have at least one public hearing, having the public being able to come in and obviously give their opinion regarding the decision. Okay.
Yeah, and the other option is that we just wait until May. Yeah, and the other option is that we just wait until May of next year.
Right.
We don't do it this year, wait to see what the economy does, what inflation does, and we just wait till May, and that gives us May and November.
And farther past the pandemic.
Agreed.
So, but I'll get that plan updated, I'll get it to you as soon as June passes, and then we can discuss it again. We will have to make a decision, though, by, Amy, do you have that data, Greg?
It's going to be mid-July, though. We expect it for our meeting that August.
Yeah.
You're going to have the auditor prepare that.
So probably within the next three weeks. I know Amy's done some preliminary communications with the auditor, so we're looking at it. But yeah, definitely, this is definitely a two-week process because we have two resolutions we have to adopt.
Okay.
So, all right.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay. Jeremy, do you have anything else?
Chipwaf, we did that MOU a couple months ago for Clover Cliff. The bids came back in, engineer estimate 85,000 for our work, and it came in at just under 53,000. So that was really good news. So I believe they can start after July 1st with their funding, so they have a pre-construction at 10 o'clock right now. So, yeah, so that was good news. Fixler Road east of Ridge Road, there were some customers that were interested in a sanitary sewer extension. We sent some letters out. We had about 50% of the people were interested in tying in, so I'd like to move forward with getting some design services to get the base map done so we can get some sewers extended, maybe 1,500, 2,000 feet.
So this is north and out of the FDA.
That goes to the north. Yep. Yep, you got it.
How many customers are we potentially talking to?
There's 12 total, there's 12 total homes, six of the properties were interested, so. And it's funny because it's a small section that has sewer on, there's sewer on Ridge Road, and there's sewer on Fixler that goes north.
Right.
But there's that small little stretch that just doesn't have it, so we're.
Got it.
So, and then also, we'd like to start talking to Jones and Henry about some new bar screens at Hinckley. It was on our 10-year capital improvement for next year. Currently, they manually rake the screens and they, not to sound gross, put the items into a bucket and haul them up about 30 feet. So they're looking to get some automated skills, so we're going to start going down that road. So we'll probably do the design services for that as well, so.
Okay.
And I believe, oh, generator, the North Pump Station. When we were doing the pump, the additional pumps at the North Pump Station there.
Yeah, you're talking about Wadsworth again.
Correct.
The stations north of the city of Wadsworth.
That is correct. The northern station that we were upgrading, there is a generator there. It's 50 years old. So we're going to see what we can do with the contractor to maybe get it done as a change order to the project. We'll take a look at what their pricing is on it. If it looks about what we would expect as far as an engineer's estimate, we'd like to maybe move forward with that. If it comes in high, well, we would just most likely try to bid it out after that. But with all the new pumps in there and getting everything ready, we figured it would be nice to have a more up-to-date generator there.
So what would you expect, 50,000, 70,000?
I think the initial number was maybe $70,000, so. But we got to look into that a little bit more with the electrical demands and all that would be, so. That's all I got.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Amy, anything else? Ali, Stephen? Steve?
Nope.
Tell me.
Can I do that?
The state of Ohio emergency, COVID emergency, was lifted as of last Friday. Medina County, we passed a resolution declaring our own state of emergency, and we should rescind that now that the emergency is over. So next week, we'll have a resolution to do that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Move to a juror.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Scotty? Yes.
Yes, thank you and have a great week.